All right, so you guys ready? Everybody ready? I don't know. Jerry said he wasn't going to be here. He sent us an email. So we have Sean here tonight from Commissioner Anderson's office. And you wanted to speak to council?
Yes, just good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, council. Just real briefly, I just wanted to promote the Westmoreland County Comprehensive Plan that is taking place here throughout the county. There are certain meeting dates that I'd just like to extend to the council and for Mayor to possibly see if he'll be able to attend these. And also promote this to constituents. You know, I live in a city as well right now. And I know you guys have a city. The problem is population and the functionality of government. And we're trying to, across all 65 municipalities, make this work as best as possible right now. With everything we have with population, individuals in this county. And try to have people stay in this county. So with that, the date's available. I know it's sooner or later. It's April 25th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. At the Westmoreland County Courthouse. And there's one closer up this way. It is May 23rd, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. At the Loyahanna Watershed Association. That is in Lea, New York.
I know, I can't, I think I have a conflict on the 25th. I was going to ask, you know, some of the other council members if they were able to go. I had to check my calendar again, and my phone's in the car. Because I definitely think it's, I was at some of the planning sessions. And I might be able to get there later, you know, after 6:00, but I don't know. So hopefully, we can get somebody, somebody from council, you know, to maybe go on, maybe go Wednesday.
Sean, if you could send me those dates.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll forward it to council.
Absolutely, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Could I ask, Sean, is there someone at the county level that is fairly conversant with the plan? That if one were to give them a call, what to discuss it?
Yes, Jason Murgody. I did not have his number. I have his personal number, I have his work number on me right now. But he would be the gentleman to contact. He'd get him and his staff. He was at IDC, the Industrial Development Corporation. They're the ones running the whole entire comprehensive plan. And I just want to say, anything I can do to help out. I know everyone knows the commissioners or has some connection with somebody. Which is how this works for government. But anything I possibly do from our office and myself, I'm here to help any way possible. Any way, any hours. I have my cards, if anyone wants anything, I'll leave them.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind leaving a couple of them here.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for taking the time out.
Absolutely. I appreciate everything you guys and every ladies do as well. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, one of the things I would be interested in seeing is whether there's any emphasis left on the Laurel Valley Expressway that comes from New Stand and North Mount Pleasant through Unity and Dairy.
Yes, Phase 1 was the up by the airport. That is Phase 1. They're still working on the road. I believe it's 981 that goes the whole way up. There's some, some people are currently holding out. So Phase 1 has been completed. They have the idea, the projection of where it will go from Mount Pleasant, Turnpike, all the way up to this way. It's just to make sure it continues to be funded. The first phase is funded, now Phase 2 is the next thing. And that's the big thing, is waiting to see where the funding comes from from the state. So as long as Governor Wolf or whoever the next governor, Governor Wolf is the current, the next governor just keeps funding this project. That's probably what we'll be looking for.
I've gone on some meetings, and Sean has too, with, it's going to be a two-lane road as far as the original plan, a four-lane road. But it's going to be an approved two-lane road where it's going to be more level and more straight. So have your trucks and whatever can take it without those issues.
Right, correct.
So it'll be an improvement to the existing road.
And that'll help with the cost. So it'll be a two-lane road, it'll be a wider two-lane road.
Correct. Taking to people's frontage off their properties is probably the biggest concern.
Yeah.
That's pretty much is why we did it.
That, I think that's one of the keys for the development of this whole end of the county. Is to have the ability for truck traffic to go to the Turnpike or go up to 22 without great difficulty.
It was dead five years ago, and now it's, I believe, being talked about. We should know what our fund will be. So it's amazing the progress it's made to this area. So absolutely.
What do you attribute that to, Sean?
The commissioners, working with, you know, all the state, all the representatives, Petracca, all the other ones. And it was lucky that Commissioner Anderson was the chairman for two and a half years for SPC. He worked with Paduto, Fitzgerald, all the big leagues in Alagena County and Fayette County. And they saw, you know, he made his pitch, and they took the money from Alagena County and shipped it over here to Westmoreland.
Nice.
So it was one of the blessings.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we learned, I think, and, you know, I'd like to hear from Mike and Christine at some point, when we were in Harrisburg, was that, you know, it's, so much of this is about networking and making the connections in Harrisburg, at the county level. And, you know, really lobbying, everybody's lobbying for the same pots of money. And, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, it seems to be the squeaky wheel gets the oil, you know. So that's really, really important, to know who the players are and to be reaching out to them. And maybe even making a ton of the pain of ourselves to get the things that we need for our community. So I appreciate that, Sean. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Number 2 on the list is, it's just a copy, the first page to, you know, council, the LIDA's building project. They're looking, they're working toward a new residence hall in CPO. They'll be back in on the agenda meeting, voting being to have a public hearing and then have council vote on it.
Yeah, and I spoke with a solicitor, like, Cap, for LIDA, confirming that the appropriate notices were being sent to the paper. And they prepared the other materials for the meeting, which I reviewed.
So it's just kind of FYI. Actually, number 3 and number 4 are the same thing. We're going to be advertising as of Wednesday. So hopefully, we'll start getting some bids in for the building roof repair and the heating and air conditioning for the city. The, we had originally talked about the comp factor, but that requires more work with DEP and some other things. So it's going to take longer. And that's not going to be a quick process. But those two, we should have an idea by the voting meeting, at least where the costs are going to come up.
How do you do that, Wayne? Where does that go, in papers or is there a website it goes to?
Well, for this, we just go on the papers. There are two papers, the TRIB and the Bulletin.
Okay, and you already have a spec of what you want done?
Yeah, yeah. And basically, we try to give them a general idea. And if they want more detail, they can contact the city, you know, see operations. But yeah, it'll go on Wednesday. And you'll see, of course, the Bulletin will be on the weekend paper. And Wednesdays, and the TRIB, I think it'll be on Saturday, I think.
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, yeah. That's right.
Will bids be opened prior to the meeting or after?
No, before we open prior, and then we'll...
What are you talking about, what did you hear?
The bids, even the asking of bids. The bids are opened up that day. And then the results of the bids are given to council.
I'll just prepare blank resolutions that we can write in.
Yeah, and we want them until that, I think it's that day when we're going to open bids.
Right.
So they want them until afternoon. All right, next, the mayor wanted to put on here about forming a committee to grant, or research a grant.
Yeah, Christine, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, we were, out in Harrisburg, you know, Mr. Petracca talked to us a lot about grants and what's available and how they have many, many options. And that maybe we're not taking advantage of things that we should be taking advantage of. And so we had thought that perhaps if we put a group together to sort of help Wayne and Ann and whoever else is involved in finding those grants, Mike, I know you can do a lot too, that maybe we would be able to identify more to be able to help our community. And with that being said, we'll also have to think about the financial end of it, in that if there's matches, you know, then of course, that's something to look into, so.
Mike, you and I talked a little bit at dinner about some type of grants for, additional grants for paving or different...
Yeah, I think Joe helped us out, explaining some of the, there was two options. One was the multimodal grant that's actually available for paving. And I spoke with Ann also about that. She's going to give me some information to pursue something like this. And what I'm trying to do with this multimodal grants, or look into it, is, and everyone knows, Leggins Air Street. Trying to get a big stretch of Leggins Air Street paved is near impossible with our budget, you know, every year. So this type of grant is a minimum of $100,000 to apply, and it goes up to $3 million. So it's in the range to pave Leggins Air Street. Not saying it's going to be $3 million to pave Leggins Air Street, but it just gives us an opportunity to reach out and try this. And one of Joe Petracca's assistants is willing to help me work with that. You know, with the information, whatever I need to do to apply. So we're going to look into that. The problem with that is deadlines. We kind of find out, found out a little too late. So it might be too late this year, but it's not going to be too late next year. So it's one of the things. The other thing that Joe talked about was, I think it was PA Infrastructure Loans. Just different loans out there to help fund, you know, paving projects, to get your streets where they need to be, if you want them to be. But he just gave us, you know, some options to look into, which was very helpful. You know, the multimodal grant, I didn't even know they did anything like that with paving. So it just came to some areas to look into, to, you know, to investigate, see what we can do.
Yeah, we must have been with him, like, what, two hours, at least? I mean, we sat in his office with his staff, and it, I mean, they're just so wanting and willing to help. And sometimes I think we kind of hesitate to reach out to people because we think that they're, you know, they're busy or they've got bigger fish to fry. But, you know, that's what they're there for. And they really want us to call them, and, you know, they'll point us in the right direction and things like that. So I guess I would ask council, you know, to think about, you know, if someone on council would like to volunteer to serve on a committee, to do a little bit of, you know, grant research work and maybe, you know... I mean, I think you said your sister is grant writer, so you and I were going to meet with her on the 14th of May, after the council meeting. She's coming into town. But, so, you know, I just, if somebody's interested, send me an email that you're interested in serving on the committee. I think it would be, you know, we can give it a shot, see...
Madam Mayor, maybe just a different tact toward this. And I think the meeting with Joe, it always reeks of, we can put a committee together, but if the people on the committee don't know any more than we do about grants, everybody's got a learning curve. I would much prefer we maybe give some thought to hiring on a part-time basis, somebody who is conversant with grants. Someone who knows the phone number of Joe Petracca to give him a call and say, what's happening out there? And if we get somebody knowledgeable, like maybe Christine's sister, who has experience in seeking grants, identifying grants that are appropriate to the city, we might get more mileage out of it. It could cost us something.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, and that may be a recommendation from the committee, once they sit down and look at it, is, and, you know, I'd like to start with a small committee that at least researches whether or not this is something we want to do, maybe does the investigative work, is finding a part-time grant writer. My past experience with grant writers is that they, you pay them a percentage of what they bring in. But they're not all like that. Some of them, you know, request a flat fee and whatever.
Didn't Joe say that he would offer his assistance?
Yeah, that's the other thing, too. They basically told us, you know, they'll help us write the grants. And they also told us that they send out, and I think Ann probably has it, a book every year of all the grants that, yeah, there it is, that are available. And it's a question of time. I mean, you know, so, you know, that's my, I mean, I'd like to start with committee, and the committee's recommendation may be to bring someone on part-time. But, you know, I'd like that to be a committee decision. So I need, you know, at least two people willing to do that. You don't have to tell me now, you can send me an email. You know, while we're on the subject, guys, here's the award that we got. And here's the two citations that we received also from Senate and House. You know, Wayne, I was looking, I didn't have a whole lot of time, but, because I was having my doctor appointment. But is there somewhere down there we can display these?
Sure, we have a display case downstairs.
Yeah, but that's the one with where?
Well, it has a lot of firemen things in it.
Oh, okay.
It's at the end of the hall there.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a display case. We stick, every now and then, we find some odd things from the past and we stick it in there. But, yeah, there, and there's some other places we could put it in. Maybe end up getting a display case for the front area.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be nice, I mean...
It wouldn't be that expensive for a case.
Yeah. Because we figured this is our first in many boards, right, guys? Okay, thanks.
All right, next on this is, we've talked about, we had a meeting and discussed, I think, and we reached a good avenue on how to handle 14 East Madison. And we refer to our solicitor to explain the process.
All right, so the property maintenance code says that we can demolish a structure that's dangerous after we've given notice to the landowner. With this property, the problem is that there really is no fee, you know, fee owner of the property, because the landowner passed away. And none of the children of the landowner opened up an estate. So there's a process that we can employ through the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas to file a pleading requesting essentially that someone be appointed as the administrator of the estate. And once that happens, then we would have someone to serve as the owner of the property. And we can proceed with the demolition of the structure.
In that process, is it going to be a long process nor really an expensive process?
No, we file a petition for rule to show cause with the court, and we have a short hearing before the court. The one problem is, is obtaining the death record for the decedent. Because the death happened approximately, at least three or four years ago, we can't just get a copy of the death certificate at the register, or the register of wills. If we submit a request to the Department of Vital Records, it'll take approximately 31 weeks to get a death certificate.
It's something to tear down by the summer.
Yeah, so we'll have someone drive up to Newcastle and just pick up the death cert. If we get there by 11:30 in the morning, you can leave with it the same day.
Yeah, I think, the goal is that it's unsafe house. We have CDBD, you might tear it down, so the cost of the city is going to be minimal, if anything. And we do have a concern about kids playing in it. So because of that...
Mr. Kelly also had an idea that we would just have the children of the decedent sign a will, or not sign a will, I'm sorry, sign a deed, transferring the property to the city, and have the city essentially serve itself, tear it down, and then we can sell the property. The problems with that are, number one, we don't it. And I don't know if that's something that council wants to be interested in doing. Number two, I did speak with Phil Shalapinski. He's, I guess, what we would call the resident expert in Westmoreland County on real estate law. And he had indicated that in order for the title to be good for a transfer like that, from the heirs essentially, to the city, we would have to be 100% certain that all of the decedents, or all of the, we call it issue, the children or grandchildren of the decedent signed the deed. So we know there's two living heirs. There was a third heir who passed away. So we would have to see if he had children at that point in time and get them to sign the deed as well. And then the second issue is, is that we would have to file an inheritance tax return and pay any and all inheritance taxes and other encumbrances on the property before we would have marketable title. So it adds, if we go that route, it's possible, but it adds cost and liability.
No, I'm just interested.
And my biggest concern, another thing, the concern of the meeting that we had was tearing this house down, because it is unsafe, but also not providing any liability to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think this process provides that, from what I understand. So unless the council has any concerns about it, that's the direction that I can head. And basically, you know, we can demolish the house with current codes, it's just the fact that we're adding this extra step to make sure we have no liability.
Exactly, it's, whenever you try to, whenever you demolish property of someone, you know, you want to make sure that they have noticed. Even though this person isn't alive anymore, the person's heirs, and if there's grandchildren, they have an interest in the property. There might be governmental liens that haven't been filed yet. There's a lot of things that we would like to avoid getting, you know, being liable for.
Zach, do we know, you said there was a third child? A deceased third child?
Yeah.
Do we know anything about that person in terms of whether he or she had children?
I personally don't know.
It sounds like this is cleaner. As far as trying to own the property, that wasn't really, as far as ownership of the property, that wasn't, my original concern is not that. My concern is getting going for it, you know, for safety reasons. If we can all fight over ownership after, I don't care. Next on the hit parade is, we talked about the 600 Main Street property from Land Bank. And I've talked to Land Bank, and what April had suggested in the meeting, you know, was to put some trees on it to kind of improve the landscaping. The problem is, as soon as you do that, now that property can't be sold. So because it's grant money, that's why. It's like if you put a statue on there and then you...
Okay, that's why, that's why, in order to do that, that it has to be, it has to be given to a nonprofit that pays taxes on it, like we did with Latanzia.
And again, it can't be sold, and it's going to be held for certain time.
Right, 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 right. Even for, even for grain money.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the problem is, there's communities out there that sold parks with grants attached to them, they've had to repay the grants. So, you know...
I just thought grain money was a little different, but okay.
You would think, you know, you'd think it should be, but it isn't. At least it is in this case. So the, basically, Land Bank's going to continue to try to market it. If they're going to free one of your window, they aren't able to market it, let her know that the city is interested in acquiring.
And I'm wondering if that might not be our policy, that if they don't sell it, that we would at least have a right of first refusal to acquire it. I think we have greater incentive to market the property than they can, because it's power of tax.
Yeah, but who's going to do it?
The Realtor.
They'll do the Realtor and let them market it.
And the thing about Land Bank, I think, is the fact is they're already spread out, there's so many communities.
Right.
They can't concentrate on one.
Right. Well, it's not a very, I mean, it's not a very attractive piece of property.
It's a narrow piece of property, yes, along a major highway. And it's also residential.
But I think, I mean, I think that's typically what happens. We have, we do get the right of first refusal. They're not going to sell it without...
I can verify, I can verify, I'm not familiar with that.
I mean, obviously, their goal is to sell it outright. So and recoup some of their demolition costs.
Have we had a right of first refusal of prior properties?
I don't remember if we did.
Did we have a right of first refusal to acquire?
I don't think there's a right of first refusal in our, in the Land Bank agreement. I mean, their objective is to sell it to a taxpayer.
Well, I guess the question is, if they can't sell, I think what you're saying is, if they can't sell it...
If they don't sell it within a lot of time, then we should have a shot before we just donate it to some...
Taxpayer, that pays taxes. The tax, I mean, the property that Adelfa owns, that little spot where Latanzia's bakery used to be, and it is taxable, I'm told.
I can't verify. I mean, I'm not arguing, I just can't verify.
Even if that is, that's part of what I understand is, that's part, I mean, they can't...
Adelfa does pay taxes on their rental property and all non, businesses that are not associated with their main core business.
Right.
So I'm aware of...
My understanding is, it has to be a taxable property. So they can't just give it to a nonprofit.
Yeah, for a period of a couple of years.
I've seen them give a property to...
What's that?
I think it's for a period of three years. It has to remain on the tax rolls.
Right.
But they, like, they give that property, I've seen them give property to communities. To sit ponchos, for example.
Well, you know, just as an example, I think, if you looked at Latanzia property, even if that ground were given for a buck, as I think it may have been to Adelfa, they, someone could own half of that and build a porch or some, something there, which then does become taxable, because there's not much incentive, I think, for nonprofits to do something like that, where try to incorporate that property in the neighborhood with the properties that are there.
Yeah, but they didn't want it, not even for a buck. I mean, they didn't want it. The people on either side of it didn't want it.
Didn't the Supreme Court just have a case recently about paying taxes for a nonprofit, paying taxes or something? I think I watched it on one of the Supreme Court sessions. They were, one of the, some outfit, where some nonprofit didn't want to pay taxes on it. But I guess the township said that they had to. And it was a whole issue or something.
Wish it were that easy, Jim. I wish it were that easy.
Well, the Supreme Court heard the case, I don't know if they ruled.
Which Supreme Court, the United States or the Pennsylvania?
No, no, it was Pennsylvania.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it, I think it a lot depends on the specifics of the case.
Yeah, usually, like you said, if it's, you know, the nonprofit has a core business. And anything that deviates from that core business is taxable.
Right.
But that core business, which Adelfa's core business is, you know, with juveniles, is, you know, that's obviously tax-free. But again, I don't know where our park falls in there.
All I'm suggesting is to also have a right of first refusal. Simple as that. We decide we don't want the property.
If the property can't be sold.
If it can't be sold within...
Sure.
Yeah, within the Land Bank's framework.
That's not within, that's not in the Land Bank agreement that we have signed with them. So if we wanted that, we would have to amend the agreement.
Fine. Well, but I guess the point I have, I guess, what I wonder about is that, is, you know, here we are in one of those situations, where they're coming up to their three years, they've been trying to sell it and they can't. And they're coming to us and saying, do you guys want it? If not, we're going to try to find a nonprofit that will take it and take care of it and stuff. So isn't that kind of what they're doing anyways, Zach? I mean, she reached out to us, basically.
I mean, I don't know what communications you've had with the Land Bank, this property, so I can't say.
It just seems to me that we have a greater incentive, I think, to market the property, we as the city.
I just don't have a whole lot of confidence that we will. That's all I'm saying. But...
You got a shot.
Can't we, Rosie, in that aspect, we tried, we can't sell it. And then that would be our right to give it to a nonprofit.
Yeah, I mean, look, I agree. I mean, I think we should, you know, I think this is, I don't know how many properties the Land Bank has had, but...
Most of the properties, like Mary Street's, obviously, Oklahoma, they sold that. And this happened to be, go along with Mary Street. They were required to take it with the other property. property.
Might be beneficial to us, to ask April to come to one of our agenda preps and we can just talk with her, so she can explain, because, you know, I don't know if anybody was on council when we, when we got into the agreement with the Land Bank, it may have changed, it may have completely changed.
I was, I took this, I don't remember.
Were you on?
Yeah, I was on first.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, I mean, Alex was here, so how long ago is that been?
It's at least five, six years ago.
Yeah, so that's when we first, that's when that, it first started, so I think it would, I'll ask her if she'll come, she told me she would, so I'll ask her if she'll come. I was going to invite her to our summit at that time, but I wanted to keep it just local and not bring in county people, so, we'll just ask her to come here and answer some questions if you guys have questions for her. I don't want her to come here if everybody's going to just sit there and look at her, but if somebody, if people want to ask her questions, you know, maybe she can explain how their process works, I will, I guess. You guys think that's a good idea?
Is there, I mean, is there an FAQ on a website that we'd be wasting our time, like we could just go on a website and read all that information rather than making her...
Well, I'd give you a copy of the contract, but I mean, I'm not sure if that would help you.
I don't think there is. Zach, what do you think? You, you've worked with the Land Bank for other municipalities.
The Land Bank's website doesn't have a whole lot of information on it.
I, I just, let me talk to her, I think maybe we'll just bring her in for, app and our, for an agenda prep, and she can explain to us how it works and then we can ask her questions. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay, on, last one, the hit parade is the advertising, you know, we have a chief of police that's threatening to leave us.
We're going to, we're going to drop him to his chair.
His, his, you know, drop, is not too hard to understand, so he has to leave us, but talking about advertising to fill the position.
None of us are real excited, but, you know, we're happy for you, Jim, I know, I know, you know, but, you know, we got to do what we got to do, I guess.
I will tell you that internally, there are four individuals that have said that they would like to be considered, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm assuming that what we're asking everybody to do is submit a resume.
Yeah, I've got three resumes, I've done it before, so I'm sure I'm going to get it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the ad, so, can we see the ad before, before, before it gets out and we're going to advertise it?
Oh, yeah, I, I, you know, that's what I do with the chiefs, if you're outside, there's the PA, PA Chiefs of Police, what's it called, Jim?
I think we should do, I mean, I think we should do it everywhere, and then...
We'll do it in paper, but we'll do it on Indeed, although, you know, some of them get on that.
Yeah, you'll get some...
You'll get $5,000.
But from my own information, the, the process, if we go inside and outside, I'm sure there's a test or something for the outside people, what about the inside people? Are they required to go through that?
He was saying, yeah.
There's a non-competitive test. It's, it's basically a sit-down oral non-competitive test for the candidates.
That means inside or outside?
Who administers that? Like a third party?
Either, it's usually council, somebody from council, it's a good idea to get chief of police from another department, things like that.
And, I've asked this question before, you are civil service, but not all chiefs of police are civil service.
That's correct.
So, how does that work? I mean, is it, is it, it's not required that they come through the civil service, correct?
Correct. Most, most chiefs are not.
That's what I thought.
Jim, because he came up with the rank, so it was part of the agreement.
Right, so, so if...
So, you were looking internally, that could be an issue with, not an issue, that could be an agreement, a discussion.
Part of the agreement.
Yeah, it could be, you know, the contract, you negotiate with the incoming chief.
Right. Most of the chiefs, if you look at mine, have been, most of the chiefs are not civil service.
Right, and when a chief, when a chief comes in, you basically, you know, the sky's the limit for what you want to draw up or design.
Would it be fair to say, Jim, that the, if you're civil service, that kind of sets the floor for various contractual benefits?
Not necessarily. It can, but really, civil service is, is just more of a protection, it really doesn't set the, the basis for any kind of, you know, benefits. You have to specify that outside, the, the scope of, of the actual civil service agreement, you have to, like, negotiate, like, my contract was, I want to continue to get what all the police officers get in, in the same sense, that is separate from the civil service. So, civil service basically is just a protection.
You compare it, compared to that one.
Well, for the, in other words, if you're civil service, I think it's just cause language for termination, without civil service, you...
There are specific rules written now by the civil service, the state civil service, that specify how you can and can't dismiss an employee or things of that nature, very basic protection of coverage.
And you can negotiate, and that doesn't mean if you hire one with them, they'll stay within the civil service, you can, you can make that as part of the discussion, you know.
So, the objective would be, we'd advertise for two weeks, three weeks, what do we do, what do we do for...
Well, you said, we advertise, well, probably works a lot of times, we'll do it a month.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, advertise for a month.
And then get that month, we'll take you.
No, that's okay.
No, when I advertise for an officer, it's usually for a month.
Yeah.
And you take the time to review the, narrow down the scope and then set up interviews, so by the time you're done, you're really at least that six weeks.
Jim, on the non-competitive testing, is it council who would say, okay, well, from your testing, whoever those two or three people or whatever they be, we want five candidates, three candidates, two candidates, do we set the parameters?
It just depends. If you're going to go the civil service route, there's already specifications that say who you can and can't hire, and who you have to hire.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do that.
If you want to go outside the realm of civil service, the, the sky's the limit, you can set whatever you want.
You could use, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you could use the PA Chiefs to narrow down.
I'm sorry, what?
You could use the PA Chiefs to narrow it down.
That was going to be my, that was going to be one comment, is about using the PA Chiefs, is there someone there we can contact that you have, for contact? And then, the, the non-competitive test, who, who makes up that test? Does it come from the chiefs of police, or...
I'm sure they have standards that they, they would recommend you use, but personally...
It's just basically, it sounds like it's like an interview.
It, it is an interview. It's more of a situational, how you feel about certain things, what you would do in this situation, you know, what can you provide the city as a chief of police?
I think to your point, I think when we did the hiring in Ross, they, they came in with a series of questions, they brought in, you know, generic questions, you know, similar to the questions you ask the officer, on a different scale, obviously.
The two things that you have to really remember when you use an oral interview panel, number one is make sure that there's no association with anybody on that panel that is being interviewed.
Sure.
So, you need to get somebody from not just Derry or Blairsville or something like that. It's very difficult, because I sat on these panels, it's very difficult when you have three candidates for a chief of police and you know and work with one of the candidates not being, you know, kind of swayed by, by, by your relationship, I know that's not what it has to be, but you know that person, how they react, and you don't know these other people, you're going to tend to gravitate toward them.
Jimmy, you just said a while back that someone from council could be on that interviewing group, is that not a problem there?
Well, I don't, they're not going to make up the questions in the, the, you know, the format or the scenarios, they're just going to be there to view it. It's a good idea to have somebody from council there, just to make sure that when it's translated for how these people respond to the test, it's transcripted or however it is recommended by the, by the, the panel, that it's advantageous to have somebody there to view that and can confirm.
So, the council member doesn't participate?
No, they're not going to fire a question, that, that has to do with the interview. But I would have somebody...
And then, and then from there, if we, if we narrow the scope, then the council could then interview, you know, the remaining, like...
Down to three or nine, whatever.
I would like to see the professionals, the chiefs association, if we can get these panel people from there, kind of identify a handful of people that have the necessary criteria with some, you know, at least with a couple of us in the room, you know, like the...
I would, I would also suggest that, that after the applicant process is completed, as far as people applying, you're going to eliminate people right off the bat.
Sure.
There's going to be people there that just aren't qualified. I, I know personally that so many people apply for these jobs, even if you write the qualifications, they just wanted, they're just trying, you know, and you're going to weed that out right away.
We saw that when we were looking for...
Yeah, I forgot what we were looking for.
I couldn't either, all its position.
The one I thought was...
Are they, are they finally interviewed, open to the public, or, they're not?
No.
No, no.
It's a matter of personnel.
A position that, a position of chief of placement affects a city.
It's a personnel matter.
They, they wouldn't dare want to ask questions, but, you know...
We don't get, yeah, no.
Give her thoughts or something.
You're talking more like a sheriff, Jim, an elected position, then that would be a little bit different.
Yeah.
So, this non-competitive test, then, you're saying that there's going to be chiefs from other districts that are just going, going to determine whether they're qualified to be a chief?
I mean, that's up to you guys, too, you guys are going to determine who the panel is.
Right.
Yeah, well, we, we did in Ross, we brought three chiefs in, they, they interviewed everyone, they narrowed it down to, say, five. Because you're going to have, you got four from in-house, these are all officers, I mean, some of them are sergeants, some of them are, so they have a police background and they have a skill, you need to help in weeding that down.
So, how, how do people outside of our community know?
Well, here's where I'm getting at. That's why you have someone on the council sitting in there, because these three people are going to determine whether this person is fit for the job, whether they know the rules of criminal procedure, whether they know laws of search and seizure, whether they know labor law, whether they know what discipline is, whether they know how to train, and they may have all that, but you might have a member of council sitting there and saying, "This person would never fit in our jurisdiction."
That's just...
Wouldn't fit.
Yeah, so, what they're doing is, they're, they're identifying for us the candidates that have a law enforcement qualifications, and then we're going to, so they're, the idea is that they'll reduce the poll, and then we'll reduce it.
Yeah, let them give you three or four or whatever, then you decide.
Right.
I mean, the thing is, nice thing I bring in, these, these are gentlemen, they're police chiefs, they do it every day. So, they're comfortable with what the process is, and they don't know anybody downstairs.
Well, they probably...
Well, hopefully, and hopefully they don't know anybody that's interviewed, so it's a completely unbiased, you know, approach.
Okay.
One last question. What is PA Chief?
It's an organization.
What is it?
Pennsylvania Chiefs Association.
Oh, the C, I thought you said PA Chiefs, sorry.
No, no, PA Chiefs.
Peaches.
PA Chiefs.
I'm from Pittsburgh, I swear on my word, you know that. As I told Rosie before, I took English as a second language.
Anything else?
Can we put student recognition on?
Yeah, we want to add the student recognition to the May.
All right, I've got the, the jacket and the information.
Yes.
I'll make sure Jim gets it, and you all have copies of it in your mailbox.
Okay.
You will, you haven't yet.
Yes.
So, I'll be down with that.
Hey, before we go anywhere, and before I see if anybody had anything else, since we're now in spring, I noticed, Mike, you've been hitting the alleys, I checked, I've seen that, so thank you, that's a big help. Whatever happened down at that, or the street there by Coons, where they couldn't get in, the, the...
You know what, I checked, yeah, I checked that out after.
I drove down there, too.
That's probably one of the...
Better alley?
Yeah, that we have in the city.
There was a couple places that...
Yeah, we, we did go out and fill all those potholes, you know, I guess one of the major complaints was the gravel tends to dirty the vehicles, which, and alley dusts, you know, if it's gravel, if it's Millings or gravel, you're, you're going to get a little dirt when it rains. But, you know, we, we checked, I checked the alley out, had workers go and fill all the potholes, everything's good on the alley, and, you know, not much we can do, we, you know, we can't really pave an alley when we got streets to be paved.
Are you thinking about doing any more tarn and chipping this year?
You know what, that wasn't planned, you know, for, for the hot mix program, you know, that's, that's a possibility in alleys, that we can utilize that, the biggest problem I have with that is trying to get some of the trucks in the alleys, and I, I think, you know, you got to fit tanker trucks, I am looking at the alleys, I'm looking at what's called almost like a drag box, where it's going to almost till the gravel up, level it out, and also look into possibly, if they rent a portable sprayer system, whereby guys can pull it, like, tow behind spray system, or they'll almost do it themselves, in-house and everything, but the problem with that is, with a tow behind tanker, with the oil, then you need distributor trucks, the oil has to be hot, you know, where's the closest location to get it, so you're running into a lot of problems, you know, with that, trying to get the oil. So, you know, the alleys, there's, there's really a no-win situation, you know, it's pretty much what we always did.
The only concern I have is, is for the people, that the alley is their only ingress, an ingress to their house, like, you know, so, should we maybe be trying to treat those alleys a little bit better somehow?
Yeah.
When we treat the alleys that don't have that problem?
Correct.
Do you understand what I mean?
I think you do prioritize them, though.
I know he does, and I know, yeah.
You know, I mean, as far as that, if you can't park in the front, then you've got to park in the alley, and he does prioritize that. I got a little quick, quick, I got a phone call today, this gentleman ago, and he called me a couple weeks ago and gave me the wrong street alley, so we couldn't find it, I didn't tell you, Mike.
Okay.
He called me today and he was telling me the right street and everything, and I said, well, I can be out, you know, take care of the alleys. He called me back five minutes later, he goes, "They're working on the alley already," and I says, "What are you going to do, call?"
I've had that happen, too. People will call me and thank me, and I'll say, "Listen, all I did was call Mike, don't thank me, next time you see Mike, thank Mike."
No, we, we do, you know, especially, you know, a lot of the streets that don't have on-street parking, we do pay a little, little bit more attention. The only other option, you know, for some of the alleys that don't have on-street parking is doing almost like a modified binder, you know, something, you know, a hot asphalt, but, but you're not doing your top coats.
Hot asphalt, sure.
So, doing something like that, you know, the one good thing is with all the alleys, the base, a lot of, the base is there, you know, a lot of them have a good base, you know, so we can, we can look into that future.
I'd be curious to know, and you may know this, or somebody may know this, or we may need to do an inventory of this, but how many alleys is that? How many alleys truly, I mean, it's, it's one thing, it's like, I can, my garage is in my alley, okay, but I can park on my street, some people can't park anywhere but in the back of their house, like this particular house.
I, I have good one, but...
What? Lloyd Avenue is a great example.
Yeah, Lloyd, Lloyd on both sides, you know, you got...
But other than Lloyd, I mean, and this one was, what, was this Harrison?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is Harrison.
Harrison.
You got Lincoln Air Street, for example, from Dallas, the Steel Mill, you know, up the alley, behind...
You're not going to work on something that's going to, you know, I mean, if there's, if there's a manageable amount, you know, I think we can justify it that way.
Right.
By using that, but...
Yeah, yeah. You know, and the alley, the good thing, too, is, like you said, we can, we can do, you know, a modified binder, where it's not going to be like what we do on the streets, but it's going to be strong enough to accommodate, you know, vehicle traffic, it's not going to break up, so, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
And then, since it's now spring, can we do something, Anne, I think this is probably to you and the chief, about, you know, I'm starting, well, you got the email about the cars without inspections on them, I got a call from a resident, I think, Anne, I mentioned to you before, up where the old Shirley apartments used to be, there was a, there was a, one, now there's two cars in that parking lot that don't have either license plates or...
Okay, I'll look again, because there was a truck with a broken windshield, which I thought was what she was talking about.
Yeah, and, and...
But it actually had a legal plate.
I don't, and, or, or it's either the plate or the inspection sticker that's expired, one of those two, so I was told there's two now there, people are just like, I don't know. So, and then, and then, we both got an email about the other ones.
Yeah, I forward to the, I forward to the police department, but, although I learned something, two of those cars, they were saying they're...
Classics.
Classics, and I never knew that classics don't have to be inspected.
They don't have to be inspected.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they have a classic plate on them, and then we're going to verify and make sure they had a classic plate on them.
Or antique, either way.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
And I, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're on the property, they're Anne's responsibility, and if they're on the street, they're the chief's responsibility, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of the...
Yeah, Jim.
Was there anything new about that Roma Italiano, they had a funding issue or something, and there was a letter or something, has that been finalized, you know?
Zach, you want to take that one?
Most of us don't, we check on it as well. Okay, so that has been referred to insurance companies, apparently that was referred to the insurance company for the city.
Yeah, the insurance companies are looking into it right now.
Anything else, anyone?
Are we going to go into executive session?
I don't know, do we have to?
Well, we are going to make a decision by personnel, man.
Okay, I don't remember, but, okay. I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes?
Just real quick, keep in mind about the hospital demolition of the parking garage. Each one of you are probably going to get complaints, because this dust and this noise is going to be someone's worst problem they ever had in their life, and they will let you know about it.
When is that?
What's the date?
It's the 30th, isn't it?
30th. April 30th.
For that week of the 30th.
So, it's probably only going to be a one-week deal, so you can just tell the people, you got to have patience, because I know I'm going to get people coming in with cars that they're going to say have been damaged by the gravel or whatever. It's just always that way. Just remember that's...
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay.
And then one final thing, if the hospital has gone around and talked to all the neighbors, the neighbors should be aware of it. They may not be happy, but they have to talk.
Is traffic being rerouted? Is there...
There's going to be a lane restriction on West Second. You know, actually, the teardown possibly is looking into about Wednesday. I think that's going to be May 2nd. They're going to encroach out on the street with their equipment and start working their lanes or the blocks, so less than 40 hours or be less restriction.
A lot of buses and stuff like that come down?
Just the garage only?
The garage and one on the south side.
Both coming down?
Yeah, yes.
Are we rerouting to Tacoma at all?
We talked about media, I'm sorry, in that area. The problem with that is it's going to make people... Because of the lack of stop signs, Michael, I talked about this morning, lack of stop signs, people are going to be speeding up there. And we can detour up there, and Michael's talking about putting the speed monitor up there, so at least let people know that's how fast they're going and...
The only reason I ask, Blaine, is that is a primary exit way from the city as it is. You scrunch that down into one-way traffic, it's going to be a nightmare getting it down.
Especially because of the bridge.
Well, that's what I mean. That's why I thought of rerouting to Tacoma, and you kind of got around it and went up to...
You want to speed cut back over there?
Yeah, and then come back on Garfield.
The trouble is, I mean, the backup of that stop sign, that was either a D8 stop sign.
The other night, I was sitting home, and the rain was coming down, you know, just pouring, and I'm thinking to myself, "What happens if Eaton Road, Fox, and the bridge, we have a contingency fund?" I mean, it's going to be like a, you know, it's going to be like a nightmare that you never wake up from. You can't get up. You can get in the light truck, but you can't get off. I mean, we have to think about that.
Hotel California, I can say that. Hey, speaking of which, how's the... What's the progress on the bridge? Are they going to be done by May 30th, like they told us?
Well, we'll find out here. I think that's next week. We got a bridge or...
Because I'm walking around with the article from the Tribune, my papers, and they tell me we never told you that.
I think it's this week or next week. I got a project control meeting, so I'm going to find out where they're at, you know, with time line, which they've been...
It just means that they told us. It's what they told us. We need to make a sign up and keep making it close to the bridge as we get closer.
I get that, I get that. But Joe asked us about it when we were in Harrisburg, and we told him we thought it was about a week and a half behind, and he was not a happy man.
He pays attention to every thing. I was so surprised at how much he knew about our area. Like, it was just amazing. He pays attention to every little detail.
He's really cool.
He really is.
He's really great.
We're lucky. Really impressive.
Okay. Anything else?
Good man.
Okay.